Let us pray. Father, we thank you for our city today. We're grateful for your watch, care, and blessings you have given us in recent days. We ask for your wisdom and guidance on this board of mayor and commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and in the best interest of our citizens. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Let us stand and salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to receive and file the agenda?
Some of, second?
Motion to receive and file the minutes?
Some of, second?
Okay, just before we do that, I want to clarify, at the last meeting I had abstained, but I don't think it was heard, so I wanted it on the record today that there was clarification of my abstention to an item in regards to CDBG. And what item number was that on the previous agenda?
I'm not sure of the exact items, we'll look it up.
Okay.
It was a June 14th meeting.
Did the June 14th meeting, okay?
I think Susan might already have recorded that.
Okay, and let the record reflect that the amendment of the minutes, the recess meeting held on June 14th, 2024 includes my abstention as it was the first time the item was read, okay?
Item C.
You need to speak up.
Item C, yes I do, alright.
We need a motion to amend the minutes of June 14th to so reflect.
Okay, so with that said, we had the second and we have the motion, okay? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jim, does that satisfy everything?
Does.
Our folks in the back, does that satisfy everything on your end? Okay, thank you so much. Alright, hearings and reports, we'll start with the...
Did we vote on the current minutes?
No.
No.
Okay, now do we have a vote on the current minutes?
I have motion.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll do our hearings and reports. Commissioners, we'll start with Commissioner Blanton.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody, good to see you with us today. Just want to start by saying our appreciation for the officer who was involved in a dangerous event last week, and we always want to publicly recognize his service and, you know, that happened in the middle of the day, and it just goes to show the situations that don't always rise to that level, but hundreds of situations they deal with every day, every week, and the good outcomes that we never really hear about. So appreciate that, appreciate everything our officers do. And along the same lines, National Night Out, we had a great time. You know, the outreach of our police department, fire department, just fantastic, it really is, and, you know, all events like that are required for us because they're my kids' favorite, honestly. So we appreciate you all for your work and your service outside of normal hours, so thank you very much for that. New business downtown Brass Masters is open today, as of 10:00 a.m., so encourage everybody to stop by and see them, they have all kinds of neat brass products and a great couple that came to us from Old Central City in Huntington. Very excited to have them, and today's their first day, so let's all stop in there and say hello to them. So it's right next to Pretty and Poised on 16th Street, yes. So great to see them, and I stopped by and saw the owner of Sawstone Brewery yesterday, and there is a bar inside that space, and it looks fantastic, and they're coming right along, so great to see those developments, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, sir, welcome everyone. I'll keep my comments pretty brief, but I just wanted to say thank you officially to all the city staff that was involved in helping to coordinate the CMH 23 tribute show from SOAR this past weekend in Central Park as part of Visit AK Was First Friday, and the festival went for two days. I, in the other hat that I wear, was a sponsor, Kentucky Power was the presenting sponsor of that, and so I had the privilege, privilege, might not be the best word, of helping set up for that on Friday morning, and I just got to see firsthand how wonderful our park staff are in helping with those events. They worked tirelessly to make sure that that event went off without a hitch, and SOAR was very appreciative of all the help that they received, and so I just wanted to say thank you officially for that. Additionally, our ABC officer in terms of kind of the different parameters for First Friday in the park, and like I said, everything went off without a hitch, and so I just wanted to publicly say thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Goot.
I just want to welcome everybody also, and give kudos to our parks. I thought the SOAR music tribute was a great event for two days. Over 70 vendors were there in the park, and then we had First Friday and the market the next day. Also, the farmer's market is down there Tuesdays and Thursdays. Tuesdays are there 10 to 2, and then Thursdays 2 to 6. And we're also going to have next month a very first, POG in the park, and so that's going to be a first. Of course, I like to do everything in the park. Parks shady, and it's a great venue, and so that's going to be next month.
Shaded, not shady, right?
Shady, shady. We also celebrated the 150th anniversary of Pollock Jewelers. I got my first wedding ring there when I was 17. In retrospect, I should have rented it, but I celebrated with Clayton Hill, one of my great friends, and went down there, it was a two-day event, and it was packed. What a lot of people don't know was Clayton was a member of the 1990 State Football Championship, Ashland Tomcat, and he was a kicker, and he was 52 of 56 that year, and during the championship game, he was perfect, and so that's a great memory. I remember it because it was on December 1st, 1990, that championship game, and me and my dad got out of the car at Cardinal Stadium, and a big gust of wind came across the parking lot and took his hairpiece clear across the highway. It took us 10 minutes to, we climbed a tree to get that hairpiece. Be especially careful next week, school's getting ready to start. On Wednesday, it starts here in Ashland. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Spriggs.
Thank you, did you get your picture taken at Pollock's? That was the pool's camera, that was the pool's camera, wasn't it? Hello, everybody, so glad to see so many people here today. Well, I have just a couple of things. It was my great honor to present two Patriot Awards from the Defense Department, two supervisors, Tyler Harton and Joseph Bailey at the postal, at the United States Postal Office here, and they were nominated by Marine E4 Austin Terry, who's an employee. This is through the ESGR, which is Employment Support for Garden Reserve. I think we all support our military, and this is really a good thing because they take care of families, give them leave if they need it, so it's really a good program. So any employees out there, remember to look at veterans or military when you're hiring people. I want to just give a quick shout out to the sanitation department employees, they are the best. I say they need some big award or something because they're always doing a great job, and in this heat, I'm so proud of every one of them, I worry about them a bit because, but now they've got these 5:30 a.m. hours to try to avoid that, but I just want to thank them publicly for all the good stuff they do. Also, I just wanted to say, we got a report over, I think everybody up here got it, where the Bowen National Research did a big study on Kentucky housing group, gap. Well, we have a gap all over Kentucky, 101,569 rental units and 104,638 for sale units gap in Kentucky. Ashland's not the only place, it's all over. So if you want to look at those figures and look at the study, the place to go is Kentucky Housing Supply Gap, kentuckyhousingsuppliesgap.org, and that'll give you an idea of what we're facing here. It's not just us, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. City manager.
Just a few brief comments. I mentioned to you about the driver's training program that we picked up in 2022 for training Class A and Class B drivers. I don't have any statistics for the dollars that we've saved, but we have trained, our staff has trained 25 Class B drivers and five Class A drivers, so congratulations to both the streets, Public Services Department, also utilities for conducting that internal training. For the board and Commissioner Spriggs specifically, we didn't receive any bids on the, for the signing. HR is going to get, actually today with Hometown, My Town TV, excuse me, to look at closed caption options for the hearing impaired that we can look at doing future meetings with that option.
Okay, well, let me make a statement there, I know you're still on your time, but let me make a statement. Sign language is their language. It's like everybody in the country has their own language, sign language is their language. I understand that that's a good thing too, but we really voted to get an interpreter, and I would really like for you to get back with Amy and find out how to do this.
Right, we, she was aware, and she did not bid on this, so we received no bids. We can list it again for bid.
Okay, thanks.
We can absolutely.
Well, I mean, I don't understand, it's only $55 an hour, it's not like we're hiring a rocket scientist at a million dollars or something, and there's so few of these people, I'm sure they know each other, you know, that they could get somebody to cover if they couldn't come, so, I mean, I don't see a problem with calling her up and saying, you know, can you find somebody to cover if you can't be there?
Yeah, I mean, we put the bid out, if people don't want to take it, I mean, that's up to them.
Well, I get that, but, you know, who wants to, whatever, we'll talk after this.
Okay, and then the last...
I want the interpreter.
The last comment I have is, if it's a pleasure, the board of commissioners, after next week's meeting, I'd like to take you all down to the wastewater treatment plant to give you an update of what's going on there, because we're on the precipice of putting that out for bid pretty soon now that we got Kentucky Department of Water feedback. So just a heads up for the community and also for the board if that, if you're satisfied with that. Mayor, that's all I had.
Okay, I appreciate that, I think we would actually, now this is crazy to say, but we would like to go see the wastewater. It is a big expense.
I've been jonesing to do that for a long time.
Yeah, and it should smell really good this time of year. Alright, looks like we have another item on here for...
Mayor, I'm sorry, like 19th still for final paving, correct?
Yes. Update on the downtown progress, the contractors are finishing some curbs on 15th Street this week, they should, that should complete all work there, or concrete work. On 18th Street, just outside the window here, they're putting in final curbs there and sidewalks, they hope to be done this week. Electric, the work on the electrical has picked up significantly. The poles won't be painted by the time the paving goes down, the paving is still scheduled for the week of the 19th. We expect to get the final plans from mountain engineering through our contractor next Wednesday. The public information officer is preparing information for the public. I will emphasize that we will do towing downtown, if the vehicles are in those areas where they're not supposed to be, they'll all be properly marked, we'll give enough heads up for folks to know, but parking downtown, because that would seriously put behind the paving effort if we can't get a vehicle moved. Demolition, if you've driven down Winchester, demolition is going on down to 22nd Street, and I believe that's it.
So, could I ask another question? There were comments made about no handicap parking. There is handicap parking downtown, it's just not marked off yet. I mean, a lot of the areas aren't marked, so it's difficult to tell anything right now, so...
Handicap, and if you, if you drive down there, Commissioner, you'll see where the handicap access ramps go up in various locations, they're either at the beginning or at the end of the blocks, they alternate between blocks. There is one additional one, I think I mentioned this last, our last meeting, that they have to cut one in on 14th Street, I believe it is, Mr. Cole. There's still one to cut in regardless, 13th or 14th Street to cut in, but yes, they meet all federal and state standards for ADA access.
Okay, now we'll move on to My Town TV.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay, anybody else would like to interrupt me? My Town TV opioid funds update.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to try to figure out what I'm doing here. I got a little PowerPoint for you. There it is, alright. So yeah, just a little update on what and how we've been utilizing the opioid funds that you guys honored us with last year. So we had, our spots have been made, and we still have, we still have some more spots that are going to be made, but spots, video spots, commercials, the advertising aspect of the campaign, and we have five spots made right now, there's a QR code that's embedded on every one of those spots, you haven't seen those yet, we've just got one that's been out up to this point. We have a whole new set that will start this fall. QR codes are embedded in all of the spots, they started airing on My Town on, it was just before, I think it was Districts and 16th Region, we started airing those spots, and to date, we've had 538,000 views on the broadcasts that those spots were on, so you could argue that 538,000 people have, or families have got to see those spots. And we highlighted the following businesses in the area, Pathways, King's Daughters, Mountain Comprehensive Care, Ark, Ramey East Up, Dare, Crossroads, AIM, and Ultimate Treatment Center. This is, I hope it'll play.
Struggling with addiction or know someone who is? My Town TV is here to help. Scan the QR code on the screen or go to mytowntvcares.com for links and contact information for local resources dedicated to addiction recovery. You're not alone, reach out today.
So that was the first one that we've had running up to this point, so it was one that we reached out to Wes Thompson at Whiskey Tango Group, and he put that one together really fast for us, as quick as he could, and so that we had stuff going as fast as we could on the, by 16th Region, that was my, my main goal was to hit 16th Region. It's the way the dispersment fell and then his scheduling, it was tight to get it in at the first of the year, but we got it in by February. So this, if it plays, is a, this is a mashup of just three of the different, it's kind of like, I don't know if this makes sense, it's like a donut we have like in the video, so it leads in the same and ends the same, and then these are different things that are in the middle of that video, so, and so these are just those pieces cut out. It's one place that you can go to find any of the local resources that are available right here, so whether it's you, whether it's a family member, there are resources available, and that's where you can go to find them. Addiction affects everyone in some way, and we are just so honored to be able to be a part of shining light, bringing hope in any way we can on this issue.
UK King's Daughters has an addiction medicine service funded by the Kentucky opioid response efforts. Our service is called Wellness and Recovery. We have an inpatient and outpatient service line, and we also go to the Greenup in Lewis County Drug Court. We offer medications for substance use disorder, including medications for opioid use disorder. UK King's Daughters is proud to be a part of this community effort and to end the stigma related to addiction.
Pathways Addiction Services and Recovery Services are a holistic approach to meeting a consumer where they are. We come out into the community to meet individuals, we actively take phone calls and consult, we do individualized treatment, and when you meet us, we are going to make a recommendation either for a high intensity kind of residential stay or an outpatient stay, and you're going to have the right to choose your path and to come in where it fits for you, and we have all of these supports wrapped around trying to help meet you where you're at when you're ready, and we're there for families when they need that support too, because addiction is hitting the community, and we're proud to be here with My Town TV to be a part of this community effort. It's our whole back, we've been here for 60 years in the communities that we serve, and we want to be here whenever something like this happens. So, again, those are just little snippets, so those will be playing at the beginning of every broadcast, so before anything starts happening, you're going to, we're going to have those, and then we're going to take those and make some smaller ones that will also be throughout the broadcast, and we'll have those four times, at least four times throughout a broadcast, so heavy rotation, and again, in that first video that I showed, we have the QR code, and that QR code connects to a site that Whiskey Tango also manages for us to just maintain the standards there. It became active, so those became active on February 29th, it was Districts. 240 views during its first run, second run began at the, oh, this is our website, so where it connects to, we had 240 views right away, people clicking and going through. The second run, our second phase begins now, that's what that means, it's, oh, let's see. Yes, so these are some of the businesses and samples of what it looks like on the site, so people can go there and visit their sites then, so it's just kind of like a splash page, so they go to the QR code, it leads you to places that are right here in the Ashland area that you can receive help, and it's almost practically immediate help if that's what you need, so it's pretty cool in that regard. Then we have a roundtable event that we are working on right now, the location is currently being discussed, we're working with the Delta, care at the Delta, to have that, the event's going to be catered, and it's going to, again, feature local health professionals, they'll be invited, and local law enforcement, different professionals that will be invited to attend, and it'll be a closed forum, I guess, that would be broadcast on My Town TV. So here's just a little quick breakdown of what we've done so far, we've got the creation of the logo, the vanity URL, which is the splash page that I was saying, four 15-second spots, two long form videos, all of that has already been paid for, creation of the QR code, landing page, etc. as well, administrative fees, the roundtable event hasn't been spent yet, but it's, it's there, and then the cost of the advertising has been put into play as well, so. What we also did, it's something just in addition, we gave a special discount to any of the, and anyone that might be listening now too, we have a special discount that we're offering, any addiction recovery, any, or anything associated with addiction recovery, we're giving a very good discount on any advertising that they would want to do too, lower that bar so that that way they, we can get that in. That wasn't a part of the opioid, you know, plan, that was just something that we wanted to do once we saw how, how big and how awesome this was turning out. And that is the end of my quick little presentation, but I did want to say, the QR code, we had about 80 hits in the first, the first few months, we were hitting 80 hits, and again, that was just one of the little small commercials, that was that first small commercial, so we had 80 hits going through the site. It trickled off during baseball, softball, but, you know, that's, and then summer, we haven't had a whole lot going on in the summer, but again, phase two, in a sense, starts with this fall, we'll run it all the way up until 16th Region again, at the very least, to make sure that we have a full, solid year. we have a full, solid year of these, these commercials and assistance and help that's getting out to everybody. Do you guys have any questions? Can I answer anything?
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Yeah, do you have, can you tell how many clicks the other places are getting? I don't know if you have the ability to do that.
No, yeah, I couldn't do that, right, yeah. But I can, I can, I can see if you click, you know, you, you scan the code, and it takes you to the site. We can see that, and, and that's what, again, Wes manages that for us, Whiskey Tango.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any questions?
Appreciate the update and how the funds are being used. It helps us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Separate, but you're good. Council has informed me that we do have more opioid funds coming, so there will be other opportunities, it seems like, when that clears the bank, then we will, I guess, move forward with looking at other ways to, to get that out to agencies in the community so that they can help continue this battle.
Not sure of the timing, but there has been official notification of another round, so I would suspect it'd be in the next 30 days or so.
Okay, very good, very good. All right, we're gonna move on to public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the Commission concerning matters related to city business services or personnel. Comments related to election issues and concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Personal attacks, obscene or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill an inquiry form and leave it with the City Clerk for distribution of proper city department. Would anybody like to come forward at this time? Okay, hearing crickets. We will move on to our consent agenda, and I think, Council?
Mayor, before we call the consent agenda, we have a recommendation from staff that Item 14 on the consent agenda, that we have a motion to remove that and to be considered separately because there's a mistake in it, that it's currently constituted.
Okay, we have the request from staff. Do we have the motion on the floor?
Take a motion.
Okay, the second?
Second.
All right, we have two. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so then we have Resolution of the City of Ash, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by City Manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda as amended for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of August 8, 2024. So move.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Anything I need to worry about here with staff in the back?
Are you, are you recusing yourself from anything?
I'm asking, I'm asking if I need to be prepared to do anything today. Okay, we're good, okay, very good. All right.
Right, and then as a separate matter, have it as...
Hang on, we need the vote.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now go ahead.
Now, our separate matter, Resolution of the City of Ash, Kentucky, adopting and approving the recommendation of the City Manager regarding the probationary appointment of a solid waste worker, one, grade three, in the Department of Public Services, Division of Solid Waste, contingent upon satisfactory completion of a pre-employment drug screen. So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to...
New business?
New business.
New business. Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ash and Kentucky and Bell Engineering for engineering services for the design of the Powled Road Box Calvert Replacement Project, an amount of $35,400 for the Department of Engineering. So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash and Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hillcrest Bruce Mission, the sub-recipient of $15,000 from the 2024 Program Year Community Block Development Grant. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Am I okay here? Good, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ash and Kentucky and BTI Contracting, Inc., for the placement and replacement of bituminous asphalt material for the fiscal year 2024 street paving program, increasing the contract by 92 days to September 30th, 2024, for the Department of Engineering. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Is that downtown, or where? Is that just all over?
It's all over paving, so the company could not get done the work that we had scheduled for them last year, so this locks in last year's rates.
Okay, all right.
And also just want to compliment Engineering and Streets and all involved getting the pavement done in front of Ashland Middle School. So, that's done before school starts, so appreciate that. Yeah, good deal. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an engagement letter with Sturgill Turner Parker and Maloney P L L C to provide legal services in amount not to exceed those set forth in the statement of billing and fee arrangements in connection with an increase in wholesale water rates for the Department of Utilities. So move. Second.
Any discussion?
How long will this take, do you think? Anybody?
It, it's a fairly lengthy process. These rates for the wholesale customers, or some of the wholesale customers, have to be approved by the Public Service Commission, and it will depend somewhat on whether we go in an adversarial proceeding, or if it goes in with a tacit agreement. Either way, the PSC still looks and does an independent evaluation, so...
Okay.
You know, it's hard to predict, but you're not talking about quick.
Yeah, looks like a lot of money.
It's a very specialized, and some of these water districts we're dealing with have already attained their own PSC council, so it seems pretty important that we do this.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and Mark Shane Prince Rental LLC regarding encroachment for the construction of a concrete retaining wall at 1525 Sword Street on the city's right away. So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ash, Kentucky and Wright Light Signs, Inc., for the Ashland City Entrance Sign Project, decreasing the contracting amount of $20,000, extending the completion date an additional 81 days to August 22, 2024, for the Department of Engineering.
Commissioner Briggs, you should like this one.
Had to catch my breath.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, first reading and approval of an ordinance titled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, amending section 13 fees in section 21 effective date of ordinance number 93, series of 2024, commonly known as the Garbage Sewer and Water Ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ash and Kentucky and CDBG, Inc., for the 17th Street City Hall Entrance Project, increasing the contract by 153 days to December 9, 2024, for the Department of Engineering. So move.
Second. Oh, you got a second, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an application and subsequent grant agreement between the City of Ash and, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for a state and tribal assistance grant provided by a fiscal year 2024 community project funding item, aggressively directed spending item in the amount of $4 million for the wastewater treatment plant project, and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ashland, ending all documents associated with the grant.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? This, this has been a part of the plan, I'm assuming?
It's just the administrative proportion, excuse me, the administrative portion of the earmark that Congressman Rogers was able to secure for us, and it's executed through the EPA.
Wonderful. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Item J, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, amending the policies and procedures as adopted of the ordinance number 51, series of 2117, as previously amended, adding Part 23 Video Data Policy, Appendix Q. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item K, reading and adoption of a resolution titled a resolution the City of Ash, Kentucky, approving the grant assistance agreement, authorizing the amendment about the City of Ashland annual budget, and authorizing Matthew Perkins, mayor, to execute any and all related documents. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Under new additional business, I'd like to take this moment and publicly, on behalf of our board, on behalf of our city, thank our appropriation counsel, Mr. Moore, for all that you've done for us and continue to do for us. More importantly, we want to thank your family who's here today. Thank them for the sacrifices they've made so that you can be at 85,000 meetings during your term and events, and I just really appreciate you so much. And I think the City Manager may also want to say something.
Well, permission to be a little bit whimsical, Mayor.
Permission granted.
All right. Through a lot of effort, I tried to get with, y'all know that Jim's a huge fan of the Beach Boys, and he's taught me more about the Beach Boys than I ever wanted to know. But there's a big riff with the Beach Boys, et cetera, but I wanted to see if they would do a special song for Jim, and we have the following for your all's pleasure to, and try to keep up with the words. AI is a scary thing. So, y'all know Roger does his great work with these cutouts and albums. This is the actual album cover of Beach Boys, Endless Summer. We thought it was appropriate, given your retirement, that it's an endless summer. Some nice words at the bottom. Jim, we just really appreciate everything you've done for the city. For those that don't work with Jim on a day-to-day basis, I think his, his superpower is how he pivots. I'm very, I could just say from my perspective, I, look, there's a squirrel, is how I go day-to-day in my, in how I operate, and that's not always received well by many people. Jim's never missed a beat on that. He's always done the great research of Jim from the entire staff. Thank you, congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I guess it's, it's gonna be anticlimactic to say we need to entertain a motion to go into executive session, but we still...
Counselor, I'd like to say, by the way, and I remember I asked you if I could call you counselor in one of the first meetings, because I've never been able to call anyone a counselor, so I will retire that term, and I'll never call anyone a counselor again. I went through our agenda and tried to think of some type of wild, complex legal argument I could make you sit through a little bit longer, but I couldn't come up with one. But for my family, we just want to thank you very much. You've done lots of different things that people never see, just like I talked about with our officers, and, and you've represented us well. You're leaving us in a good place, and thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's been probably the most rewarding six years of my legal career in, in public service. I had private practice for so long, and it was, you know, it was good, and it was interesting, you're making a living, but I feel like we've had the opportunity to try and help you all, and a lot of great things have been accomplished, and a lot of great things that are in the works. And, you know, this is, I'll go ahead and say, one thing that I've harped on from time to time is that it's, it's difficult for you all and for the staff, when you're trying to accomplish something, in, in the world we live in with social media, you have a lot of people who've never accomplished anything in their life, or done anything in their life, but who feel justified in making personal attacks and criticisms, usually uninformed, not capable of carrying on a rational debate on, on the subject, and you all have to take it, but nonetheless, I, I'm proud to have been part of what's going on here and what's continuing to go on. And I know it will continue to go on. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Having said that...
All right. Well, we do need to go into an executive session. I know it wasn't on the agenda, but I've asked for it specifically as it pertains to potential property acquisition.
And also an individual personnel matter.
And an individual personnel matter.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
There's cupcakes back there.
Thank you all for attending today, and we will return shortly, we hope. Thank you all for attending today, and we will return shortly, we hope.
And no action was taken. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Folks, thank you. We are adjourned and thanks for waiting.
What about the corner back there?